Okay, let's get started. Good evening, my name is Robin Muir. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Kitsap, I want to welcome you to the Central Kitsap School Board Districts Three and Four Virtual Forum. Tonight's forum is being recorded by both the League of Women Voters and the CAT, Berman and Kitsap Access Television. And will be available for viewing both on our website at L W V dash Kitsap dot org and on BCAT's cable broadcast. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes political parties or candidates. The League does not, does take positions on matters of public policy and advocates for those positions after careful study. Formed in the nineteen twenties as an outgrowth of the women's suffrage movement, the League's purpose was and is to this day to educate and inform citizens so that they may more fully participate in our democracy. As a membership organization, we depend on our members to organize and run events such as this. We invite and encourage any, everyone to become members and help us work on the League's basic mission, which is that our form of government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. All candidates listed in the Voter's Guide were invited to attend this evening's forum. Unfortunately, not all of them were able to attend. But joining us this evening are the candidates for Central Kitsap School District Number Three, Rob Sanders, Drayton Jackson, and George Campbell. And for the District Four candidates, we have Jason Gillum and Megan Heine. Welcome to all our candidates. We're so happy to have you here this evening. So the rules for this evening's forum are as follows. All candidates will be given one and one half minutes to make an opening statement. Following the opening remarks, I will ask questions that have been submitted in advance by the public. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. At the end of the form, each candidate will have one and a half minutes to make a closing statement. Please keep an eye on the digital timer. If time expires before you finish, finish speaking, please finish your sentence and yield the floor. Each of you has our thanks for stepping up and running for elected office. Please be respectful of each other, refrain from personal attacks, and address your remarks to the moderator or the audience. So let's get started. Our opening statements will be in, given in the order that the candidates appear in the Voters Guide. So first will be Rob Sanders.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here tonight and to have this opportunity to talk to everyone. I have lived in Bermanton, Kitsap County most of my life. Went away in the Marines for a while, came back, did some work elsewhere, but I always end up back here. I've got, don't have any kids left in schools, but I had one kid who graduated from Olympic. And now I've got grandkids out there and a couple of great grandkids. So I still find myself concerned about schools, what's going on there? And I'm basically hoping to just give back a little to the community. And you know, the processes and procedures that I read of the school board all sound fine, but I'm not sure that maybe we couldn't do better on some of them, following through. So a lot of the things I see out there are just kind of a lack of transparency. And you know, parents feeling like they've got it right. Thank you.
The pandemic phrase, right? You're muted. The next person to speak will be Drayton Jackson.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum for us to speak. My name is Drayton Jackson, and I'm the current president of Central Kitsap School Board. And I have, when I got elected in two thousand nineteen, I would have never thought about all the things that would transpire. I came to the board. I have two sons that are in the Central Kitsap School District. And it was issues that was going on, especially with students of color that I wanted to bring up. And then got thrust into everything that you see. So I sat and was part of being a legislative for WASDA, which is the statewide School Board Association. And now I serve as the FRN, which is the Federal Relations Chair for WASDA. And what that work allows me to do is to go and fight for our students, you know, in, in Washington DC and allow some of our legislators and our senators know what we're doing. My purpose for running again is not just to hold the seat, but it's also to make sure that we are fighting for democracy and fighting for public education in a different way that we have never seen before in a long time. And I think that we're in that position where we need strong leaders, people that don't come with personal agendas, but people that come with agendas of the Constitution, people that come with agendas of the students and the people. So my reason for running again is to finish the work that has started and the work that we need to do, follow children and to move our future forward.
Thank you. Next will be George Campbell.
Good evening. My name is George Campbell. I've never been in politics, yet a lot of the parents and everybody out there know me. I've been in Kitsap for thirty-one years now. I've done everything from coaching at the local college to coaching at the junior high schools. I've been on various different boards and everything else. They asked me to run because they know I'm not a politician and I don't like politics. I don't go for either side, but I am for kids. Everything I do is for kids. I set up soccer camps. I make sure all this nice stuff for kids goes on. I participate in junior rodeos. I participate in eventing. I participate and put on soccer camps. I'm just tired of seeing politics from both sides and I'm more straight down the line independent. I want to see the schools become schools again, teaching our kids and allowing the kids to be kids and have fun. I do not tolerate any type of bullying of anything. I am married to an Asian wife. Again, within Kitsap County for thirty-one years, I had two kids go through the CK District, and I have six grandkids currently in the district. So the reason for me voting is just to bring it back to the school. I want to make sure everything's transparent. And I want to make sure the kids are being kids, the teachers are being teachers, and we're teaching our kids education. Thank you for having me, and I appreciate you putting on this forum.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next will be Jason Gillum.
Hi, so my name is Jason Gillam. I've been in Central Kitsap, primarily in Silverdale for twenty-six years now. My wife and I combined have a total of eight kids who all come through Central Kitsap Schools, and now we have grandkids in Central Kitsap. We've seen a lot of things in the national media divisiveness and people arguing over what should and shouldn't be taught and how different things are. And we've seen it on the local level for various issues that are going on. And on social media and, and things around town, and one of our daughters is actually a teacher, wants to go to Kitsap Schools. We're hearing a lot of, I guess, infighting and dispute over the two sides of various issues that are very much extremes and not wanting to see the other side. When we found out this position was open, and I apologize a little bit to Megan, I had the impression she wasn't rerunning when I first signed up. But my wife suggested that with this becoming vacant, I have the right temperament and demeanor to help bring sides together, to bring in, bring logic to it, and to help keep the extremes out of everybody's business and try to keep the kids, or focus on the kids, meet the kids' needs, keep our curriculums and policies directed at teaching the kids and letting them get the education they deserve and that Central Kitsap is known for. Thank you.
Sorry. And lastly, Megan, your turn.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this forum. Thank you to my fellow candidates for your willingness to campaign for this office. And thank you to the community members who are watching for your civic engagement. My name is Megan Heine, and I am your current Central Kitsap School Board Director for District Four. Our district's success matters to me personally. My three elementary age kids will attend Central Kitsap School District for years to come. I grew up in rural Camas, Washington, raised by an engineer and a teacher who taught me to value family, hard work, and community service. My husband and I settled in Central Kitsap for family ties, natural beauty, and our kids to attend quality schools. I want our kids to know this community supports them. That's why I volunteer to read with students in our elementary schools every week. That's why I show up at every school event I can, from school plays and concerts to sport events to student presentations. And that's why, when a vacancy opened on the school board, I stepped up to serve our community. I'm running to continue the work of improving our schools. Our community deserves well-managed, fiscally responsible schools capable of preparing every student for future success. Improving academic results is my focus. Our students suffered learning loss during the pandemic. I'm dedicated to helping them recover. My goal is a Central Kitsap School District that inspires pride in our students, parents, dedicated staff, community, and I'm just getting started. It's an honor to serve as your school board director, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our questions. Our questions for tonight's forum have been submitted by the public in advance of, on the League's website. Because of the time constraints, we probably won't get to all the questions that were submitted because there were well over thirty. So we're going to do the best we can with the ones we've got. So hopefully, we, we cover all the topics that people are interested in. First question will is, what was great about your own education and what could have been better? And the first person to answer will be Drayton Jackson. And for your, for the future, we will be rotating who goes first on each question. So Drayton, you are first.
Thank you. For me, one of the greatest things that I learned in public education and growing up in Brooklyn, Brownsville, one of the roughest neighborhoods in New York City, was that I had opportunity. I had chances. In my neighborhood, I didn't see teachers that looked like me until I got to junior high school. And it was in near where I saw teachers that said, hey, you can do better than what your community is. You can do better than what your surrounding is. And that stuck with me all the way to, and it made me just realize that, you know, the ability for a teacher to impact a child is so powerful. We saw that during the pandemic, when a lot of our teachers stepped up, even though they went remote, a lot of our teachers were encouraged and meant to a lot of our students that were struggling. And it wasn't just about the students, it was also about the families. So for me, one of the things that public education has taught me was that I always, always have a chance. I always have a place that I can be in society. And it's been one of the greatest things that have led me to be a leader today.
Thank you. Next is George Campbell.
I have a unique situation. I was actually brought up under the German school system. I was a military kid, so I came up first through the German school system and then moved into the DOD school system. And so I was always brought up under academics and fun. The one thing they taught me in those system is to be a kid, but to also learn. Education was very important over there when you're overseas, but also being a kid was fun. So we participated in a lot of activities. I was a member of the soccer team. I was also a nerd. So I was also a member of the chess club. I did very well there. And those are some of the things I'd like to bring to Central Kitsap, is I'd like to bring the education back to where we do focus on the education. And then we focus on making sure that the arts and sports are covered and, and bring it back to the children. I want to see the children thrive again. I know that the United States in general is falling behind in education, and I want to see that come back up to where it used to be. I want to see it come up to that high level. I want to focus on the teachers, the students, and bring it back. Outside agendas, I'm not for. I'm for education and children.
The next one is Jason Gillum, Gillham, I'm sorry.
Gillhammer, Gill, I'm good on that one. I grew up in Southern California Mountains, a county called Peabody. Most of you have probably heard of, so it's fairly small. My graduating class was about a hundred and fifty. So I, I feel like I got a really good education. I think they did it pretty well at schools big enough to give up some variety for the size of the community we had. But it was, you know, it was in Southern California. It wasn't perplexed by many of the big city problems that a lot of schools face. I think that they, they did very good things. There were some things that they lacked on. One of the problem things they lacked on, in my opinion, was letting people know about what opportunities were available. Not that I have any problems with the military. I did twenty years in the military, but the biggest reason I joined was because I didn't see any opportunities for me to move on with my education because I grew up fairly under advantaged, somewhat poor. So I joined the military. I use that. I got my college degree now. I've been retired for a while. And it's an opportunity to hopefully do our, do for our kids a little better than what I know.
Megan Heine.
What was great about my education was I had involved teachers and coaches that were invested in my education and my well-being. A caring adult is, was really critical growing up, and I believe that's still critical today. Additionally, our school district was well-funded and supported by the community. And I want the same for our kids and our community. I enjoyed my time in middle school and high school in band and cross-country and track, which were made available through community support. These activities kept me involved and invested in my learning. And as we saw during the pandemic, some sports and arts and activities are sometimes what makes the difference between a child choosing to continue participation in school or to stay at home or possibly drop out. And so those activities are really critical.
Thank you. And Rob Sanders.
As I said, I grew up around here and graduated from Bermanton High School, but went to Bermanton Schools all the way through and had fantastic teachers along the way, many that I would consider friends and a few that I'm still in contact with today. I was big into sports and the music program. And those things kind of carried me through the educational parts that I maybe wasn't as keen on. Some of the teachers kind of had to make me learn sometimes. But community involvement in the schools and parents' involvement, I don't know if that's slipping or if it's still there, and I'm just not aware. But I'd like to see more involvement out there, the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next question, would you support a drive for a diverse teaching staff? Why or why not? First would be George Campbell.
Diverse teaching staff, of course I support it. We need all walks of life. We need everything, you know, and, and the best candidates are what we need to look for. In order to provide for our children, we need the best art teachers. We need the best music teachers. We need the best coaches. We also need the basics. And so I'm willing to, and, and always will support a diverse community because that's what's needed in a school. Otherwise, you're not going to get the right education. You're not going to see all the nice things that can be taught. Because I had a very diverse teaching staff growing up through DOD and German. And so it, yes, diversity is very much required. Thank you.
Jason Gillum.
Well, as far as a diverse teaching staff, I fully support any kind of diversity in teaching staff. I don't particularly like seeing a person's diversity, race, ethnic, city, religion, whatever it is, as a focus area for where to hire. Obviously, I'm more in support of whoever's most qualified for the job, who's, who's going to support the kids best. But at the same time, the teaching staff should reflect what the student population is. So if you have a diverse student population, what we do, you needed a rich teaching staff. So if there is a spot where we're coming short, where we don't have enough of some community or group represented part of the student, I'll see, then we need to maybe focus our recruiting efforts for well-qualified candidates in that area. But as far as getting like some quotas or any of that kind of stuff, I'm not generally in favor of that. I mostly would like the qualified people who want to do a good job and teach over worrying about the diversity.
Thank you. Megan Heine.
Yes, I absolutely would. Our students need to see themselves reflected in both the curriculum and the workforce of our district. Recruiting diverse staff is a challenge. And one way to possibly address this challenge would be for the state to do more to promote programs like the Troops to Teachers Pathway for Teacher Certification. Our military families add diversity to our community and could help diversify our staff. And this is something that I intend to advocate for in Olympia. So I absolutely would advocate for a diverse staff in our community.
Rob Sanders.
I'd be all for a diverse staff, but I, I do want to put emphasis on hiring the most qualified, best person for the job. I don't like targeting an ethnic group or something to artificially create a diverse staff. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at.
And Mr. Jackson.
This is one of the things that I, when I ran, was one of my vocal points into it. And I think when we look back at two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, we were four point eight percent Asian, three point four percent black, one point five percent natives, and our teacher population was less than four percent of that, that represented that. Studies always show that when you have teachers and staff that look like the students that it represents in there, they learn better. They feel more safe. They feel comfortable. The one thing in Central Kitsap School District that we have tried to do and as, you know, making sure that we did it earnestly, was go after teachers that are qualified, but teachers that also look like our native families that are there, our families that come from our Latin families that are growing. So that has to be something that is very, very pushed because if our student population is growing to that, we want to make a belonging space for our students to have that. And we need teachers, administrators, and we need staff to look like them as well.
Thank you. All right, next question. Can you provide examples of policies or practices you would support to promote equity in areas such as resource allocation, student support services, and academic programs? And this, I believe the questioner is looking at equity as opposed to equality. So the first person will be Jason.
You repeat that question one more time?
I'd be happy to. Yes. Can you provide examples of policies or practices you would support to promote equity in areas such, in areas such resource, such as resource allocation, I'm sorry, student support services and academic programs? Oh, try it again. Can you provide examples of policies or practices you would support to promote equity in areas such as research, resource allocation, student support services, and academic programs?
I don't have any specific policies in mind for those areas. It's not an area that I had honestly given a whole lot of specific thought to. Obviously, the different programs and things do need to be supported. And so whatever funding allocations or resource allocations that they need to support providing the services, I would be supportive of, but as far as a policy, other than what we currently have, I, I don't have anything to add to that at the moment. If it's something that somebody sees or brings up, there's a need to change or look at, I will certainly be happy to look at it.
Thank you. Megan.
Part of welcoming all students is celebrating the many different abilities and identities within our district. Helping our students in our community understand that embracing diversity is not about guilt or division. It's about celebrating the creativity of humanity and the richness of our cultures. Equity is not about taking something from one student to give it to another. It is about giving everyone what they need to succeed. Our policies are written to protect everyone regardless of race, gender identity, sexual orientation, or religious beliefs. When our policies are challenged, we call for an independent investigation so that we can have the information needed to rectify any wrongs.
Thank you, Megan. Rob Sanders, please.
I'm all for equal distribution towards anything and sharing before all. The current board policies and whatnot, I find some of them vague and open to interpretation. So I guess I would want to clean that up so that it's not an interpretation, but a plain reading of something and everybody gets the same result when they read it. And that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Drayton Jackson.
Thank you. I think during the pandemic, Central Kitsap School District showed what equity is about. We, we found that there was a lot of students that did not have internet access. A lot of our families were struggling. So, you know, a lot of times I think we put this equity into a black and white thing is that we're taking from somebody to give to somebody else. Equity is a, a, a single white mother that may not be able to afford a laptop for their child to take online classes. So in our policies, we made sure we leave where the equity lands. It's, it's one of the things that made Central Kitsap School unique in a lot of ways because we had that as our forefront. So during the pandemic, we showed our policies moved into place to make sure that everybody got served. We had teachers that did not have internet that we had to serve. So when we talk about equity, we're talking about making sure that everybody is met where they're at, what they need in order to make sure that they have what they need to succeed. And I think that that's where our policies, we have done that. Can we get better? Of course. But we leave where the equity lands to make sure that everybody has what they need.
Thank you. And George Campbell.
I guess I took the question a different way because I've seen it in the past and everything else. But the way I see the equity thing is with the students. You have the smart ones. You have the arts. You have the bands. You have the sports. And I've seen in the past where certain programs were given more. It doesn't matter what color creed or anything else or all that stuff. A hundred percent correct about equity. We need to make sure that everybody, the smart students are taken care of. I know Central Kitsap has had some of the best. The art students need to be taken care of, the music students, the sports. We can't just focus on, oh, because I've seen a school district before that has focused so much on football that everybody else took a backseat. So when it comes to financial equity, I see that we need to support everyone and where they stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. What are your preferred guidelines for the selection of books and other content for school libraries and classrooms? Megan, you are first.
Central Kitsap School District has a panel that their entire job is to review books. And we have a request for reconsideration. You can access that on the website. And so I think that, I think that that panel works really well. The October, March, and June quarterly meetings were all canceled due to zero submissions. We want deep thinkers in our community. Books should absolutely be age appropriate, but we should not be banning books. Students need to see themselves represented in their literature that is in their library, whether that be their age, gender, race, or ideology.
Thank you. Rob, you're next.
Well, I agree with what Megan just said. I, I think books are very important and, and kind of, I can think of through my own son. He's a crazy reader, which has made him better in all walks of life, you know, in school. School was always easy for him because he would go right through the reading material. And so having a place where kids can get books and read about different topics and learn on their own even, so important. And, um, really glad that there is such a committee that's doing that work. Um, back in the day, it was just a poor library and all by themselves. So, uh, I hope that we'll continue that.
Thank you. Drayton Jackson?
Thank you for the question. Uh, that's, you know, as my colleague said, we do have a panel that, that does that made up of community leaders and also our certified librarians. What I, what I want to say, and I want to make this very clear, a lot of the books that you see that people are talking about have been in our libraries in the school districts for, for a long time. And I think that one of the things when we let a national agenda pick what we're doing locally, that's, that's, that's very scarce. And I think when we look at how our students need to see the things that make them feel comfortable. I grew up in the library in my school and also in the library in the community. And it helped me to have a different view, but it also helped me to things that I didn't, wasn't comfortable to asking my parents or saying to my parents that I got to say, okay, yeah, that's the way I feel about a lot of things. We have to make sure that the library is kept sacred. Because if we go back to what was done to a lot of our Jews with burning the books, it's the same theology in that of getting rid of what is important to those that it matters to. So we have to make sure that we understand what it is to have certain books in our library to teach the children what they need for themselves.
Thank you. George Campbell?
I tend to agree with everyone. Uh, like I said, growing up in Germany, we had a very liberal library system. However, it was a very age appropriate. In other words, younger kids couldn't get stuff that wasn't meant for them or they wouldn't understand. So a library has to be something that they can learn stuff from. Um, and the biggest thing is, is I'm glad they have a panel. That's the first I've heard of it. So that's very appreciative. But yeah, to be very just age appropriate. My kindergarten kid doesn't need to be reading something that a high school kid's reading because they're not going to understand it. Um, and so, yeah, a very diverse library is required for education because you need to see what's happened before. And it's just the way it is. A library is, is there for knowledge. You have to have that knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
Uh, um, I, I think I pretty much agree with most everybody here. Books need to be available in library. If students are finding some point in their education, they're receiving the classroom lacking or they're looking for more. Maybe it doesn't fit with the bulk of the, uh, students in the curriculum, so might not be appropriate for all classroom. The knowledge and information still needs to be available to them to get the specific knowledge that they need. Uh, the whole idea of banning books baffles me. I don't understand why some people do it or why they feel that there's a need for that. And I've looked at a lot of these, uh, not a lot, I've looked at several of these, uh, so-called banned books scenarios. And I find very little reason or logic behind it. It seems like, uh, people are afraid of diversity or change or whatever minor thing they're afraid of. Our students need to have access to these things. Um, obviously within age appropriate levels and things like that. Uh, definitely supportive of a diverse and available, uh, media materials for.
I'm gonna skip to the, um, skip this next question because you've basically already answered it, um, which was on banning books unless you all want to address that again. Already, um, pardon me. Next question. How do you plan to engage and involve parents, students, and community members in the decision-making processes of the school board? First to answer will be Rob Sanders. Where's Rob? Rob, I think you're on mute.
Sorry. I, I'm assuming that, uh, quarterly or whatever email goes out from the, uh, from the schools about what's going on. But it's kind of high level and whatnot. So I think maybe a blog or something, um, that parents can access and get additional informa, information. Um, you know, outside of what going to CKschools.com tells you. Um, and just trying to get that one-on-one level. I know in my own neighborhood and whatnot, I talk to people every day and, and so we share. But, uh, a lot of parents don't have that. Um, and I'd like to create that atmosphere where there's kind of a one-on-one with their school board.
Thank you. Uh, Drayton Jackson?
Thank you for that. I mean, Central Concept School District has already done this. Uh, we heard the community during COVID and we responded. Uh, we started, uh, with an ambassador program. Our ambassador program allowed, uh, the community to come in, see our schools for about four weeks, five weeks, and had those questions that make them understand, uh, what the education, public education was all about. We did this on a scale that was just, I mean, tremendous and so much information that people did not know. Uh, also our strategic plan, our strategic plan was done by the community. Our strategic plan was what we had the community come in and ask, this is what we thought, this is what we had. Our youth was involved in that, our students was involved in our, uh, strategic plan. So we've answered that question is saying, how do we get community involved with? What I want to see more of is people coming to our board meetings and voicing their opinion. We had a great board meeting, uh, la, last board meeting where the community spoke on both sides. That's what democracy is about, giving everybody their voice. And the more that we can engage in that, the more that we know that we can grow in democracy.
Thank you. George Jackson? George Campbell, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Um,
Combine you two.
Yeah, I've always been a, uh, community person. So a lot of the people out in the community know me, the soccer coaches being from being a coaches director. So I spend a lot of time still out in the community, out on the soccer fields or out at the horse arenas. And so people are always coming up to me and I'm going to continue that. I, I've always been a person that you can walk up to and talk to. I don't always remember everybody's names because I get people walking up and then my wife goes, uh, who was that? And I give them the, oh, I don't know, but she says, you acted like you knew them forever. I try and be that way and, and as a board member, I would be doing the same thing. I'm going to be open. I'm going to be available. Um, it's just the way I am. I want people to know where I stand. I also want to know where they stand. Agree with it or not, people's voices need to be heard. And that's the reason that I'm running is I want people to know they can come up to me. They can give an opinion that I might not like, but I'm not going to give them anything more than a smile. And I'm going to be very polite. It's just being on the different boards and everything else. It's just the way I've always been. Uh, I, I look at what's best for the community and take the direction that they need to go.
Thank you. Uh, Jason?
Well, I think that the Central Kids App School Board and the School District are fairly transparent, uh, for the parents and, and community members that want to know what's going on. The information's out there available. There's newsletters sent out, the board meetings for the most part are open. The records, the website, it's all there for the parents that want it. Uh, any parents that are saying that it's not transparent, I would be interested in knowing what they're finding that they're having trouble getting information on. Um, I, I haven't been the most active at times, but whenever there's something comes up in the school district, I'm wondering what's going on. I can usually find it fairly quickly going online or, or talking to, uh, other people that I know are involved. So the information is there for those that want it. I don't think there's any way to force feed it to the parents and community members who aren't interested. So I, the newsletters are good, the website is good, there's always room for some improvement. Uh, but I, I think overall we're doing a pretty good job.
Thank you. Megan Heim?
As Drayton mentioned, we just finalized our district strategic plan. We had nearly eighteen hundred people engage in our fall forum either in person or through the online form. Our strategic plan takes their thoughts, opinions, and wishes for the district and translates them into a living document that we as a district will use for the next several years. Our district encourages our parents to take a very active role in their students' education and openly communicate with school staff. We have clear procedures addressing parental concerns for a variety of issues. And our district just honored the inaugural group of our district ambassadors. Our ambassadors received presentations on an organizational structure and strategic planning, student learning and instruction, human resources and school funding and safety and operations. The application for year two will be available soon and I encourage anyone in our community that would like to know more to apply.
Thank you. Next question. What strategies would you employ to, to foster a positive and inclusive school climate where diversity is celebrated and students feel safe and respected? George Campbell, you're first. No, I'm sorry, Drayton Jackson, you're first.
Thank you. Uh, our superintendent led, uh, last school year with making sure that hope was there. And, you know, understanding what hope is all about. Belonging is so important to making sure that our schools is there. One of the things being the president of, of the school board, I was able to go into all of our schools and listen to the students. And that's one of the one things that they said that they wanted more belonging school. They didn't want the politics involved. And I think what we have to really deal with is making sure that, that atmosphere fits everybody. It goes back to having teachers, staff, and administrators that look like our students. But then also the students don't want to run from the hard conversations. I think we're not giving our students enough credit to say that they are strong enough to know the type of things that they want. And if we could take that listening ear and say, what do they want? From cheer clubs to different clubs and different things that they want to do togetherness. Kohaia, uh, you know, did a thing where everybody's together. Those are the things that make a belonging a school and those are the things that we've already started to do.
Thank you. George Campbell?
I agree with Jayden, Drayton, sorry if I mispronounced it, but, uh, yeah, it, it's just exactly that. We need to take it to the students. We need to listen to the students. Uh, we also need to listen to the teachers. We need to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Um, the schools need to be schools. It needs to be someplace that people look forward to going to. I know when I went to school, even though I traveled a lot, I always looked forward to school, making new friends, being accepted. It was one of the biggest things was being accepted. You're the new kid on the block. Um, we have a lot of that in the central kids app. I want to make sure that everybody's accepted because we do have a lot of transient students having a large military area. So we want to make sure the military students feel welcome. We want to make sure anybody that moves into the area feels welcome because they're going to come from all walks of life, all parts of the country, and maybe even other countries. And so we need to make sure that our schools meet the needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Jason Gillen?
Works in inclusion is absolutely necessary in our schools. The students need to be able to voice their opinions and have their voices heard. Um, some of, some of that has led to some controversy, I understand, recently, I, I think was, if not mistaken, at Kohaia recently that during the beginning of Pride Month, you had students wearing, there's only two gender shirts. I think that if you, if you allow one side of a issue, you have to allow the other side. As long as the students are able to voice their opinions without being offensive to each other, without making others feel like they aren't welcome or anything like that. I think it's perfectly acceptable to voice and share your, your views on things and feel included as long as you're not trying to exclude anybody else. And I, I think that's a, a skill that a lot of our youth have. I don't think that, I think that, uh, being offended is often a choice. Not always. Some people are too offensive things and are to be offended by that. But some of, sometimes I think it's, uh, more of a choice of people choosing to be offended over something that's not really offensive.
Thank you. Megan Heim?
One of our goals in the district is to prepare our students to live in a, in a diverse community and to get along with people in, from different backgrounds. Uh, we are providing a more complete and diversified curriculum that celebrates the many cultures in our schools during different pride months, teaching empathy and following our students' lead by encouraging students to form clubs of their choosing. In most instances, our children are leading the way with their acceptance of diversity and many adults could learn from them. And we can do more by continuing to recruit diverse staff. Our district also provides social emotional learning focused on helping the students learn the social skills they need to connect and gain a sense of belonging in our school community.
Rob Sanders?
Um, I think involving the students in the transition, uh, you know, coming into a school. I got a granddaughter who's moving up from elementary school, um, to the next level. And how good it would be if the upperclassmen at that school were greeting the new kids coming in and, uh, showing them the ropes and what's available and all the new stuff that's coming there, you know. And a kid is, um, pretty apprehensive when they're moving up to the next grade level and worried about what it's going to be like and are they going to fit in? And, and there's so many more kids coming from all the different schools together. Um, so I, I would want to do that. And then, of course, at the elementary level, um, teachers and, uh, administrators at the school. Um, they're all they've got really to, um, bring them in and, uh, make them feel comfortable coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. How will you advocate for adequate funding for schools within the district? And what strategies will you employ to ensure the funds are used effectively? What ideas do you have to advocate for additional funding to support programs not covered by the state? First person is, um, George Campbell?
It, the levy is one thing that we've always supported and we don't have a problem supporting the levies. Uh, but we need to make sure that we're equally looking at all the schools, make sure that we have, you know, the things that they need. Because not every school is equal. We have the rural schools out in Green Mountain. We have Kohaia. We have Central Kids App on the heart of Silverdale. We have Olympic, which is, you know, in the tail edge of Tracington, a much smaller school. We just need to make sure as a policy that we find the right way to spend the money. So everybody gets an e, equal but not equal share, if that makes sense. Um, sometimes for the bigger schools, it's going to require a little bit more money than the smaller schools. But we need to make sure every school gets the proper programs they need. We just can't give it to one and then say we're out of money. We need to make sure that we equally share it proportionally based on the school size and things like that, and to make sure the programs are covered. And now saying, oh, maybe next time you get it, but no, we just need to make sure that every school's covered based on its population, its student body, its size. We just need to make sure our policies are fair to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jason Gilham?
Uh, like George just said, uh, for the most part, we use, the community usually supports levies. I do recall several years ago, I don't remember exactly how long, I know that a levy in Central Kids App did not pass. Uh, and, uh, came down to, it was a lack of, uh, people being aware of what it was, what it was for. So in with the voter season and stuff, when levies are out there, people obviously don't want to spend money, more money or, or even sometimes just maintain the same amount of the opportunity for levies falling off. So transparency is necessary and, and like I said before, we're transparent for those that want it. But for the voters who may not be following what's going on at school around election time, it's probably important to send out, hey, here's what the new levy is going to be about and here's why and here's what the change is and what it's for. And I think that the, it's gotten better at that over the years. Um, there's always room for improvement, like anything. But getting the funding for the schools comes down to making sure the voters understand what funding is for.
Thank you. Megan Heim?
Our levy does pick up a good portion of the funding that does not come from the state. And our levy allows us to offer smaller class sizes, arts, athletics, and several other extracurriculars. Um, and the, the levy remains imperative for the success of our district. And without that levy, the board would be forced to, to face extreme budget shortfalls and need to make very difficult decisions. Advocacy is also a critical part of being a board director. In the last year, I have traveled to Olympia to advocate for transportation funding and funding for special populations and to Washington DC to advocate for federal impact aid to cover our lost tax base from our federally connected student population. And this also includes the increased number of special education students that we receive from the Navy. Central Kids App is an exceptional family district, which means that the Navy members can remain here so that their children can receive the extra care they may need in order to complete their education.
Thank you. Rob Sanders?
Um, transparency, um, big deal. How the district is spending my taxpayer money, I would want them spending How the district is spending my taxpayer money, I would want them spending it like I spend money. So if a, a nice car for me is thirty thousand dollars or something, I wouldn't expect the district to spend sixty thousand on, on a car. You know, it's kind of like the stories of the government buying a ten thousand dollar toilet seat. They've got to spend our money wisely, and the public's got to know that the district has their back. As far as funding, actually, Central Kids App is well-funded if you look at the other school districts and stuff around the state. I, I think we, we need to monitor that money. Thank you.
Thank you. And Drayton Jackson.
Thank you. I, like my colleague, Megan Heinz has said, there's very different funding mechanisms. One of the biggest things is that if you look at our levy, we stayed at one fifty, a dollar fifty. If you look around our neighboring districts, everybody's above a dollar fifty. And we did that because we wanted to respect the community and make sure that we didn't put more of a heavy burden on the community. But there's also other funding mechanisms that a lot of people don't understand. I think one of the biggest misconceptions is we as funding, the McCleary decision for our state. We're the only state with a constitution that says we have to fund education. And our state has done a very, very poor job of doing that as much as they can. So as much as we say levy, there's other resources that we have. And like my colleague Megan Heinz said, we go to a, a federal, to DC, and impact aid impacts everything that we do. We make sure that we talk to our legislators and let them know that we have. So there's more funding mechanisms, but the transparency that we have, our district has done ten times better than anybody. And if you look at all of the neighboring districts, we have feared much better because our business department has done a great job on making sure that our finances were done the correct way.
Thank you. Well, we're going to continue on with the levy issue here. As the twenty twenty-two district levy effort demonstrated, most opponents argue there is plenty of state funding for schools. The state only funds basic education under the law. As such, levies are required to provide services not funded by the state. The Central Kids App District Levy provides for a host of programs from arts and athletics to libraries and technology to additional special education needs to, to safety and security in the schools. Did you vote for the levy in twenty twenty-two? Why or why not? And if not, if you did not support the levy, would you eliminate these programs? And the first person is Jason Gilham.
So I did support the levy. I've supported just about every levy that we've had for the school district. I do think education is very important. I think our, as well-funded as Central Kids App is, there's always room to fund more for schools. There's a lot of things that we can reuse funding on in the state that aren't school-related. Our students need to come first, and studies have shown that students have access to the various other programs, arts, music, things like that. They tend to fare better overall in school. But even though those programs may be considered extracurricular and not necessary for the basic standard education, there have been several studies, and I could look them up if anybody's really curious, that show that students that get those programs do better overall. They do better in schools, and in my opinion, they do better in life. They're more well-rounded. And I think we need to continue to support those programs.
Thank you. Megan Heim.
Yes, I overwhelmingly supported the last levy for a number of reasons. One, I appreciate that my children are in classes with, that are a smaller class size. I like the additional arts and athletics. Currently, Central Kids App does not, does not charge their athlete, athletes fees to pay sports. And so part of our levy funds covers those football players or basketball players or track, you know, runners and throwers, they don't have to pay anything to participate in those sports. And the state only funds districts under the prototypical model. And we staff our district at a better ratio than what the legislature will pay. So we have to come up with that extra funding in order to staff our district outside of the prototypical model. And so I did vote for the levy, and I will vote for the next one.
Rob Sanders.
I, I supported the levy. I, I think when money gets hard to come by, creative solutions have to come forth. And eventually, when you wind through it, maybe something's got to get cut or cut down. Or I, I don't know, there, there are a lot of different fu- funding mechanisms that can be put in place. When I was in school, yeah, football players or, or people in sports, they had to pay fees and things in order to play. I always felt bad because that's not equal to everyone. Maybe some of these parents can't afford that. I know just the equipment, football cleats and whatnot are very expensive. And so I, I like CK's funding of everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Drayton Jackson.
Superintendent and myself, with the last levy, we went around and talked to people one-on-one. We met with community leaders, we met with business leaders, and we explained them. I, anybody that says do not support the levy hates children. I'm just going to say it right out because the things that the levy enrich and give to our students, like George Campbell said, sports and everything, these are important things. And that's what the levy helps. But what we're missing is this, special education is by law. And we fall very short in supporting our special education students and parents and families because it's not funded. So when we talk about taking funds away from public education, we're talking about our families that need this funding. Because the services that are given to our special needs children, this is important. A lot of our parents suffer from that because we have people that give a narrative that we're not doing the things that we're supposed to do, and we are. So I think when we look at funding, I overwhelmingly supported our levy, made sure that I, my neighbors did as well by giving them the clarity. So we have to make sure that what is the narrative that we're listening? And the transparency is always open because our books are open to the public because it's the community's money.
Thank you. And George Campbell.
I've supported every levy that's ever come through. I've also, like I said, I'm a good listener. And I've listened to people, because I know this last levy was dicey. It was very dicey. And it took a little bit, even on my part, to get some of my neighbors to support it. They have kids. And one of the things they told me, and I don't understand why, and I want to make sure that doesn't happen again, whether I'm voted or not, is communication. A lot of them said they weren't getting the answers that they wanted. And I don't know why they were saying that. It's just, it's one of the reasons they got me to run is I, I want to make sure that our kids are supported, having six grandkids in. And like Drayton said, I do have a child in the special education program, and that's very dear to my heart. And so we're always going to support the education system. And we want to make sure that the special education is taken care of because that requires a lot of work. It requires special teachers. It requires a dedicated staff. So the big thing with me and the levies is yes, I'm going to support it. And I'm going to try and find out why we had so much difficulty this last levy. It was, it, why it was so dicey, because in the past, it's always been overwhelming. And so I'm always going to support the levies. I'm always going to support the children. And I'm also going to try and find out why we had so much difficulty with that last levy.
Time is up. Thank you. Okay, switching gears. What are your thoughts about ways to address the learning loss resulting from the two years of COVID? First would be Megan Heim.
Well, I personally have taken a very active role in this. In the last year, I have volunteered for the Readers Are Leaders program. And they collect volunteers and they assign them to a third grade classroom to read with third graders that maybe need just a little extra help. You know, one of the metrics that predicts graduation is being able to read by third grade. Before third grade, you're learning to read. At third grade, you need to be able to read in order to learn your curriculum. And so I've taken a really active role in reading, reading with students. And this last year, I read with, in three different elementary schools, four students per each school for the entire year because that was something that I could do to ensure that we were making progress for these third graders that unfortunately left kindergarten, maybe not knowing how to read, and went into pandemic education. And they struggled mightily without the ability to read.
Thank you. Rob Sanders.
Yeah, I'll second what was just said. My wife volunteers for the third grade, or did volunteer for the third grade reading program at the elementary school closest to us. And those are great kids that I'm sure they all missed the opportunity to have that one-on-one with someone reading. Not sure that they got that at home or not. I guess that's about it.
Thank you. Drayton Jackson.
Yeah, this, this was near and dear to me because of me having two sons in the school district. And I think a lot of it was also our mental health issues that we brought in counselors to deal with as well. That, that was a key component, I think, political community help that helped us in our schools to do counseling with a lot of our students that were suffering from that. And I think we put in a lot of extra. I'll, I'll give our teachers so much credit because there was teachers that would help students. We, we created spaces where teachers can help students one-on-one if they needed that extra time and extra help. And we also did for the last two years, a lot of summer learning to allow our students to catch up. So we have a lot of work to do. And I, I mean, this, we're, we're not going to see the effects in two years later. We're still understanding it better. But we know health and wellbeing is, is key to it. The well, wellness of our, of mental health of our children is, is important to this. And I think it's going to take everybody, community, but it's also going to take us supporting their families to make sure that families have the support that they need to also help with us helping their children to get back.
I think I'm the one on you. George, you're next. I'm sorry.
I'd like to, I agree with everybody so far. It, it's going to take a while to bring us back. And I'd kind of like to see a mentor-type program come back, maybe the older students, helping the younger students that missed out. It, it would be very nice to just, the teachers are also, we are overwhelmed as well. So we can't always expect the teachers to do it, but maybe to have some of the students, the better, you know, the higher GPA students coming back in and helping out. I remember that in my days, and that's something I'd like to see going forward. Thank you.
Jason is next.
There was definitely a, a learning loss during COVID. And I think that the parents that were heavily involved in their students probably suffered a lot less. And my parents tend to be hands-off with their children. As far as ways to make that up, it's going to be very difficult. It's going to have to be at the, in the classroom level, the teachers identifying the students that maybe need the extra help. The school board and parents and communities supporting the students that need more help. As far as a policy, as far as how to help them catch up, the only thing that I can think of offhand is maybe the students that struggle, maybe provide them, especially over summertime when they're lost. Maybe some kind of workbook or something that maybe they're not getting at home, something that they can, some kind of motivation or incentive for them to complete that so they don't drop any more behind. There's always a lag during summer, and some students, they, they definitely come back in the fall behind where they were when they left in the spring. And I think minimizing that might be the best opportunity we have to make up for the lost under COVID and the things that we lost during that time.
Next question. There are parents concerned that their parental rights are not being taken into consideration. What would you say to these parents? First to answer is Rob Sanders.
Well, I, I can tell you that firsthand, I've had parents tell me that. They didn't feel listened to. They don't feel listened to at the one or two times they get an opportunity for three minutes to talk to the school board. And, and they walk away. I don't know what kind of answers they get after speaking to the school board or if they get nothing. You know, it goes back to that communication back and forth. And if it's not there, they're going to feel that way. So I would want the schools to follow their own policy, really, and and get back with the parents if they've got a complaint. If they're not complaining, well, nobody's going to know. They're talking to their neighbor or somebody. Thank you.
Thank you. Drayton Jackson.
Thank you. We, we made sure that we were very transparent with, with parents. And I know how a lot of parents feel with thinking that, you know, the rhetoric of, you know, we're taking their, their students away. A lot of, a lot of the things that you see is law. Students have rights too, you know, children have rights too. And I think we've been very transparent. We answer every question back. Our superintendent has done a great job on making sure that we respond to everything. I think the misconception is that in my email box, I get tons of emails. And it's just making sure that we answer back to people truthfully and getting the true facts of what is there. So when parents say that, I always like to know where is it coming from. And a lot of the parents, and I'll be very, very truthful, parents that I've spoken to that have said that, and then once you got back in touch with them and explained the issue that they have, they've said, oh, thank you for answering my question. So we've done that. I just think that people don't understand the amount of overwhelming emails that we get from the overall district in making sure that we answer those questions from everybody, but get back to everybody in the time we matter so that they feel heard.
Thank you. George Campbell.
I think the, Drayton's correct. He's probably overwhelmed with emails. And the thing that I'd try and fix is maybe just generalize and say, hey, look, we're working on it. We heard your question. Give a quick response to say we heard it. Give us a little time to research it and get back. The more communication is better. I, I've had to deal with that at the level with the associations with soccer and soccer clubs and disputes and things like that. And you can't give an answer right away. It, it has to be thought out. It has to be a good answer. But the one thing we did know is we acknowledged them. We said, we got it. Please give us a little time. We'll get back to you. From the parents that I've talked to, that's what they're not getting. Once they get the answer, they're appreciative of it. But it's when they don't get the answer, get something right away is when they get frustrated. So that's one of the things I'd like to see changed is acknowledge the question. It doesn't necessarily get an answer, but acknowledge and communicate. That's, that's my philosophy.
Thank you. Jason.
I've, I've heard some complaints about parents feeling like their rights aren't heard. And it seemed to, from what, from my point of view anyway, stem from two main areas that I've heard it from. And one of them is the, the sex education program that the, I believe the state passed recently, where they're changing with the sexual education curriculum throughout school ages. And the other one would be on the, the trans, transgender rights and, and those kinds of things. As far as the sex education situation on that, I think that the parents' rights, I, I think they're worried about some of the things they're seeing and hearing on social media that aren't accurate. I think our teachers are trying to teach age-appropriate, correct materials for the right, for the right age groups. I think they're doing a pretty good job of that. I think parents are just panicking over some of the things that they see that are maybe more real, real-world, life-realistic versus what the clinical thing that they grew up with. As far as the trans rights and the, the gender affirmation stuff, I have mixed feelings on it. And I don't really have a basis to make a decision without looking into that further. But I don't think parents' rights are being reserved as much as they may feel like they are at times, and they just need to be aware of that.
Thank you. Megan Heim.
We encourage our parents to take a very active role in their students' education and openly communicate with school staff and the school board. We have a variety of panels that parents and community members can get involved in, ranging from our district ambassador program to curriculum panels, and also open and honest communication with board members is always welcomed. It's also helpful for parents to take their concerns to the source. It's also helpful for, for parents to take their concerns to the source and start by contacting the school staff member who can most directly address the issue. We respond to community members who speak to the board. However, community members who come and speak to us about issues outside our district. Or outside of the board's purview is not necessarily something we can address. And sometimes the issue of parental rights really comes down to state laws that give the students legal rights. And board members are bound by state law and we must uphold Washington state law.
Thank you. And I think this will be our last question for the evening. Um. How would you address the mental health and wellbeing of students as well as provide support for students who have experienced trauma? And the first to answer will be Drayton Jackson.
Thank you for this question. Um, as I stated before, we partnered with, uh, Placenta Community Health. And, you know, they, they did a wonderful job in coming in and allowing not only, uh, just our students to have a space to do that. But to also help them to understand what they're feeling. Uh, we also did this for our teachers. We, we offered, uh, a lot of the web, uh, uh, counseling for our teachers to go through as well. So we, we addressed that issue with making sure that we partnered with people that can help that. But then also understanding the whole child. And what that means is that we, we, our teachers have to be diligent in making sure that our families are taken care of as, as well. Because if the home is not taken care of and support is not there for them, then we're doing an injustice for the student because we're sending, we're taking care of them in our district, but then we're sending them home to something that's not supported. So we look at the whole child and try to make sure that we are supporting them in, in various ways. But then it's also our community. We have community partners like KCR. We have other community partners that we want to make sure that we have that relationship with, that we can send students. To make sure that they get that outside help outside of the district as well.
Thank you. George Campbell.
Oh, I'm not an expert in this field, but mental health is definitely an issue that needs to be looked at and. The big thing is to make sure the child's heard, not ignored. So completely agree with Drayton. We need to make sure that the children are heard. Uh, we need to look to, look at the backstories. I, I completely agree. Uh. I see a lot of it. And just make sure nobody's ignored. Find out the why, why is we having a difficulty? Um, is it because of bullying? Is it because of sexual identification? Whatever the case may be. We need to listen to our children. We need to make sure we have the support for our children. And, and that's just the way it is. I, I, like I said, I don't know how to answer with all the programs there because I haven't seen it and don't know it, but. We definitely need to support it. We need to see it. And we need to catch it before it becomes into a violent situation.
Thank you. Jason Gillan.
Uh, mental health of our students is, it's critical. And in today's day and age with social media influences, with. The diversity and the political environments, the. Bullying of various kinds, uh, mental health has become more and more of an issue with our students. I, I'm not sure, but if the schools haven't, uh, amped up the counseling available from what it was historically, I'd like to see some more counseling available. I'd also like to make sure the students have, uh. Well-advertised knowledge of where the, the safe spaces are for certain, whatever issues, if they got some issue. Uh, and that might come back to adversity and the student, teachers and staff looking like or being like students are. They need to have somebody they know they can talk to about whatever issues they're experiencing so they can. Have that safe space to express themselves and maybe get any help that they may need. Even if they aren't getting that at home, or especially if they aren't getting that at home. So.
Thank you. Megan Heim.
I think this comes down to safety and security, which is an issue I hear concern about in our community. Safety and security includes both hard and soft measures. Hard measures include, um. The physical and building safety of our buildings and our person. Soft measures include. The social and emotional support our district provides to help our students feel connection and belonging in their school community. After tragedies, a common refrain is that we need to focus on mental health. And I would like our community to understand that's what social emotional learning is. Social emotional learning teaches our students the skills they need to set goals. Manage their stress and behavior and form healthy connections with others. Students who gain these skills have more academic success and are less vulnerable to isolation, rejection and bullying.
Thank you. And Rob Sanders.
I like that counseling and things are available for the students. I don't like that, uh. Parents aren't more involved there when can be. Anytime an organization of any kind is keeping secrets or telling students to keep secrets from their parents, I can't be in favor of that. Um, I understand there are situations where maybe a student doesn't have a good home life or there's something going on at home. And that's kind of outside of what I'm talking about. Uh, I also understand about HIPAA laws and all of that. I work with it every day. But. Parents need to be aware of what's going on with their kid. And if their kid is having some kind of a problem. I wouldn't want to find out three months later that my kid was getting counseling and I knew nothing about it. And then something happened. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We, each candidate will now have one and a half minutes to make a closing statement. First to go will be George Campbell.
I've not a whole lot to say, just. I hope to get your vote. Um, again, I'm, I'm, I'm the neutral old guy. I want to make sure that our kids are taught. Um, they're kept safe. And that we have a place to go to. I remember the days of Central Kids App when my daughter and son both went. Amazing programs. I'd like to see us back in that statue again. Uh, I want to see all the parents communicating again. I want to see. A levy was a thing where it was nothing, you know, getting eighty, ninety percent pass rate on a levy was nothing because of the communication. So. My goal is, if I get your vote, is I'm going to give you that communication that you've been asking for. I'm going to be very open. And give you the information you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Gillan.
So. One of the things I heard complaints about when I first was considering possibly running for the school board was that us, and I. Honestly didn't attend any school board meetings where the tech happened, so I, I may be misinformed. I was hearing that a lot of the, some of the school board meetings were being come over on with parents on the extreme left and right of various views. Trying to be heard over the other side and. It was causing such, uh, polls, it was causing such problems. The school board was having difficulty getting anything accomplished at their meetings other than. Uh, what's in the parents and our concern. And while listening to parents and their concerns in the community is vastly important. Uh, that's one of the things that my wife encouraged me to, uh, to consider running for is because I tend to have the demeanor and the temperament to. Of rein in those diverse views and find common ground and to bring focus back towards important, which in this case would be the kids and their educations. So. That being said, uh, I think that I have the right temperament for the job. I think I have the right demeanor and I, I've got leadership skills from my past military and post-military life. And I think that that would be beneficial to the school board if I get elected. And if, if I get elected, I'll do my best to. Uh, bring those skills and, uh, help bring people together and support our kids in the best way possible.
Thank you. Megan Heim.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for organizing this event and to Mr. Gillan for participating. And thank you to the members of our community for taking the time to learn about your school board candidates. I hope I have made it clear tonight that I am fully engaged and committed to supporting our students by supporting our public schools. I believe our public schools where our students learn to get along with people who have different cultures and worldviews. Are an essential component for knitting the fabric of our si- society together. In addition to volunteering and serving on the school board, I demonstrate my commitment to public schools by keeping my kids in them. I want extraordinary educational opportunities for my kids and I want the same for yours. I make the needs and best interests of students the primary focus of every decision that comes before the board. I am dedicated to boosting academics to recover from pandemic learning loss, safety and security. And increasing community engagement and understanding all our district has to offer. CK School District's mission is to prepare students to be college and career ready. And while the basics form a foundation. Success requires more than just providing rigorous academics. Addressing barriers to learning and teaching students the social skills needed for success is essential to achieving our mission. Providing a safe and welcoming environment for students is imperative for students' focus and sense of belonging. That sense of belonging must also extend to our families and our community. The more our families and community engage in the education of our students, the more our students can accomplish. I ask for the opportunity to continue serving our school community. Please vote by August 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is Rob Sanders.
Um, I'd like to, uh, thank the League of Women Voters, um, for having me in this. It's, uh, been an experience. I've never done this before. And, um, and a good experience actually. I'd like to thank the voters that are out there that are going to watch this. And, um. I hope it was somewhat enlightening. If elected, I, I really hope to support obviously the kids, but parents. That don't feel their voices are being heard. And, uh, maybe seeing if something can't be done to fix that. Uh, transparency would go a long way. I, I know everybody thinks they're transparent, but there's also a lot of people out there who think they're not. So fixing that, um, as far as, uh, test scores for the students. I was thinking, um. Those that are behind. Surely there's, uh, time in the, in the day that. They can be moved to a separate place, uh, in a classroom to, um. Get extra. In math or reading or whatever they need to bring them up to standard. Instead of just hoping it co- comes up, um, by itself. In any case, thank you.
Thank you very much. And last is Drayton Jackson.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this and also want to thank the community for showing up. Uh, and then I also want to thank Mr. Campbell and Mrs. Sanders for stepping up, uh, as well. Um. I come with lived experience in poverty, homelessness and as a person of color. And when I got elected to the board, one of the things that I made sure that I did was stick to the truths that I know in my lived experience. Um, the key part of everything that I do is not about position. It's about where can I be the most help? Where can I put that energy in to make sure that we there? We have a strategic plan. We have a North Star. There's work to be done. And I want to make sure that we complete that work and could, uh, finish that work. When I got on the board. I was with a board of veterans. And over the transition of three years, I saw the board change out with three different positions. And I stood firm and got voted in as the president of that board and made sure that I made one commitment. To make sure that our board was together, make sure that we had one voice and make sure that we led with our students, equity. And our district at the forefront. We made sure as a school district that we did the right thing. And as I said before, if you look around, Central Kids App School District was due diligent with the taxpayers' money and making sure that we stayed firm on being strong. So sending me back as an, uh, elected official on a school board is about finishing the work that we have to do. We have a plan and we have a way forward. And I want to continue that work with the board that we have now.
Thank you. All right. Nicely done candidates. Once again, I would like to thank all of our candidates for taking the time to join us this evening. As a, a well-informed electorate is critical to our democracy in events such as this or one way to achieve that education. The primary election is August 1st. Ballot should be mailed by July 14th. So that's from the auditor's office. And, um, any, and need to be returned to a ballot box or postmarked by August 1st. Information on candidates and issues can be accessed at vote411.org or in your voter pamphlet. Uh, which you should have received in the mail. The pamphlet can be access- accessed online at kitsapgov, that's one word, dot com slash auditor. And on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Kitsap, I would like to encourage everyone to vote and, uh, y'all have a good evening. Thank you.